Okay. We'll call it order tonight's committee of the whole for the Auburn City Council meeting for April 1st, 2025. The council should have the minutes from the March 18th committee of the whole. Any additions or corrections of those minutes? If not, is there a move to approve?
There's a move.
Second? Motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are approved. Historic Preservation Commission. Ms. City Manager, you or I want to take this right?
I will take it. We had one applicant, but both incumbents we reached out to because they had not reapplied and they both intended to apply, but had some issues with the portal. And so we wanted, they're both eligible for a second term. Give them the opportunity to reapply and you can evaluate that for your April 15th appointment if you're willing to do so.
Sure. Counsel okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. We'll move the Historic Preservation Commission then to the April 15th meeting. Auburn Public Library, Ms. Wood.
Yes, sir. One position term begins April 15, 2025, ends April 14, 2029. We have one incumbent Bonnie McQuain who serves one partial term and one full term. I would like to nominate Bonnie McQuain for a second full term.
Second. I have a motion second for Bonnie McQuain. Any comments or thoughts? Questions? Appreciate Ms. McQuain's service. She's currently the chair of the library board right now and is doing an excellent job. Okay. All in favor of Bonnie McQuain for a second full term, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries and we'll confirm that later on in the agenda. Counsel procedures discussion. I'll turn it over to Councilman Griswold.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I stated before, I think we may have interpreted our own, misinterpreted our own rules on citizen input and public hearings. I could be mistaken, but I don't believe that our intent was ever to prevent an applicant from thoroughly presenting his input on any particular agenda item or to be limited to only speaking during the public hearing period. So I'd just like the council to consider some alternatives to that. Again, my objective is to ensure that the applicant has sufficient time to present his proposal or development or whatever it happens to be in detail prior to going into the public hearing. That was my overall intent. Now, one way to do that would be to change our rules and I passed out some draft, cut and paste, and these are certainly draft. That is an option to do it that way. If someone has some other approaches that they'd like to take or if they disagree with the intent altogether, that's, I'd love to hear from them. But I did have some citizens contact me after an earlier meeting that when we limited the presenter, the applicant from speaking, they approached me afterwards and said, hey, you know, we really would have liked to hear what he had to say. And because of our rules at the time and the way they were interpreted, he could only present during the public hearing portion of the meeting. And again, I don't, I don't believe that was our intent. And I have 10 minutes on here. I don't know if 10 minutes is the right number, but I think it's important that we allow a applicant to speak outside of the public hearing portion of the agenda. I'd love to hear from everybody what you think about all that.
What applicant did we limit and not give proper time to?
Tom Haley.
During the February 18th meeting?
The one for Farmville and Donahue, yes. Now, I realize we could have asked him to, by asking him questions, we could have called him back up and had him fully explain it. I didn't think about it at the time and that's my fault, but I don't know of any other instance where we've had that occur. And that's why I said 10 minutes may not be the right time, but I think doing it outside of the public hearing window is appropriate.
So did we limit that person from speaking or did they receive the same amount of time that any other person would ever been able to receive?
We gave them the same amount of time as anybody else during the public hearing.
Okay.
But he had, obviously he had prepared a more extensive presentation and he even commented, I can't possibly get through this in this amount of time. Well, you know, had he known he was going to be limited to the amount of time, he probably would have done something different.
So that applicant had took the opportunity to meet with several of us individually prior to that meeting to go through his development application extensively?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. And we, we have the opportunity to ask any applicant further questions at any point in time, correct?
I agree with that too.
Okay. Is this the only situation that we've come across that has not met the expectations of, of not having enough time?
I don't know the exact time, but we had an applicant come forward about a liquor license and I don't know if we had a public hearing on that one or not. I think, I don't know.
I think it was about the conditional use and they may have missed speaking during that time during the public hearing. And so they spoke at the end of the meeting.
And that would be an item where we don't necessarily have a public hearing, but there is an opportunity to speak on items on the agenda upfront. And again, I don't know if he had more to say or not, just don't know. But that's why I'm saying this is not a fix all to everything, but it's just an introduction to something. And whatever, if we can come to an agreement that basically the biggest thing for me is having a period of time outside the public hearing window or the window for public input on other items on the agenda item, on the agenda.
Kelly, could that time be, it's, it's the, the question answer time when, when an applicant comes up and, and the council's able to, we're able to ask?
Yeah, certainly could.
Whatever questions or questions.
Like I said, I did not think of it at the time.
Yeah.
Could have said, hey, would you like to have a few minutes and talk about your project or something? And then he would have been open ended, basically. But this would allow, again, a specific time so we don't drag everything out all night long. And if we were to schedule it prior to opening the public hearing or prior to opening the window for public comment on items on the agenda, then there wouldn't be any question about it.
So if an applicant presents, has 10 minutes to present, I mean, we still have the opportunity to follow up with questions. So it could even have longer than the 10 minutes.
Certainly. Yeah, certainly. We have, we always have the option to ask somebody to come back up, answer questions. There's no doubt about that. Yeah. I'm just trying to figure out something procedurally so we avoid that issue in the future. And as Beth has noted, we haven't had many instances over the last six years that I can recall where it's happened. But I haven't ever had anybody call me after the meeting and say, hey, I really would have loved to hear more about what this project was either. And that's, I'm just, not only am I stating my personal opinion, I'm trying to respond to some concerns from citizens that, that they didn't hear everything they thought they should have heard.
Okay.
Is that you?
I just want to ask a question just so that I'm clear on what you asking, Kelly. Okay, so when we, I guess when Ron say, the first item when the public can come up is items on the agenda, right?
Yes.
And I noticed that he says, but some of the items have a public hearing attached to it.
Right.
Okay, so if you want to wait till the public hearing to speak, but to me that's an option. So they can do both, right? Is that correct?
Procedurally, no. It says citizen input procedures for agenda items other than public hearings.
Oh, other than?
These are, these are your procedures adopted by this council the first month this council was sitting. So you have the perfect authority also to modify your procedures, how you see fit in the majority.
So, so if we changed that procedure, and I'm just asking, okay, if we changed that procedure, items on the agenda, and then when the public hearing come up, then, you know, actually, can he speak then or do we have to vote on it at the time that he first do it? Or, you know, how would that work? And that would give more time to me. I mean, because the item on the agenda, that's five minutes, right? And the other one is three minutes.
I think the purpose, Connie, I don't know if I'm going to completely answer the question you're asking, but I think I will try. I think the purpose is to try to have the conversation based around the decision that's the agenda item as opposed to, you know, somebody speaking at the beginning of the meeting and then that agenda item might happen on down, you know, on, you know, it might be item 10 as opposed to right afterwards. These items that have public hearings attached, I think it's important and most practical if the conversation and discussion around that happens when that item's introduced and we are discussing it and deciding upon it. So that's why I encourage everybody to wait then, even though it is part of our rules, I do.
And I'm just asking for this reason. I was just wondering, because if they had the opportunity to talk the first minute, but that, that's not the time that we, we can wait till the public hearing to vote on whatever it is, right? When they talk again at the public hearing.
Well, what we're talking about.
I'm asking that question. I know that's not the way that goes.
Sure. I believe, I believe what Kelly's advocating for, we're talking, discussing tonight, bringing up is a potential ideas for us to potentially change our rules as to how we go about, you know, managing public commentary on public hearings. I believe, Kelly, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you and I, you and I have had a couple of conversations. So he's just trying to offer what he thinks is a more productive way for us to, to have these conversations, correct?
Yes. And it, it may not work to do it during both sessions, the, the non-public hearing items, or it may work, you know, just for one or the other, but certainly for the public hearing items, I would, I would hope that we could have more time and a specific time for someone to present their proposal or their project or their whatever. I mean, you may not want to do it during the things that are not having public hearing. I don't know. What I've given y'all is the start point is our council rules as they're, as currently stated. And then the pen and ink changes on here that Megan was kind enough to, to do for me are, it's an approach. It's not necessarily the approach. So what I'm looking for tonight is, again, during committee of the whole, I had, do we want the staff to go spend a little time and massage a draft or a change to our procedures that we could, again, we could modify at a later date and then present it to us at our upcoming council meeting?
Sure.
I think you're exactly right, Kelly. I, I, I agree with you. I think it would be fair to any person who won't have heard that now we're going to vote on it. It's not only fair to the developer, but it's fair to the citizens out here listening to us. And they could possibly change their mind on how they feel about something if they have a chance to ask the developer their questions. So I think in a sense of fairness, I think it'd be a great idea.
So who, what constitutes an applicant?
Good question.
An applicant is anybody's got an application before the city council for any reason, if it's just as applicant.
So we had a sense based off of your proposal, Kelly, is that we could have 20 individuals who need 10 minutes in a meeting to speak about, I mean, I want to?
If they're, if they've got an application before you, take, take like a alcohol license and because it runs through planning and zoning, but it also runs through the finance department. So it's not a full development application. They're occupying an existing commercial space. Theoretically, they're an applicant for you and to the ABC board. So as written, and this is back to, this is just a thought or idea, however you guys want to define applicant, if you want to make it development specific, if you want it, you can define that or we can define that for you at whatever the majority of you want to do or consider.
And certainly not my intent to have 10 and 10 and 10 and 10. That's, that's certainly not where I'm headed.
But it is an?
Or their representative, you know, would, would, would have a total of 10 minutes to present their?
Well, you could limit it to.
We could limit it whatever we want.
You could limit it to just public hearings. That would reduce that number quite a bit because, because the citizen input for procedures for agenda items other than, than public hearings, that covers the vast majority.
Yes.
Of, of what we do and, and those, those applicants still have an opportunity to step up and talk for, for the?
Five minutes.
For five minutes.
That's true.
So, and I.
Maybe the public hearing is the only ones that we really need to, that, that the council would like to look at. But, you know, a lot of times the applicant is the city. So, I mean, they're not going to be up here going on and on and on. They come up and they present the, the bare bones of their proposal and we consider it and we ask questions as needed. But I, I think.
I don't think it's necessary for the agenda items other than public hearings.
And that's, I'm just throwing some stuff out here to see what sticks y'all. This is simply a start point, scratched up, tattered up, whatever. But I would like to see some mechanism where the applicant can comment outside of the public hearing window.
But we do have that opportunity now for council members to ask questions, unlimited number of questions, unlimited time to an applicant. Should any council member want to ask that applicant those questions?
If we know the right questions to ask.
Exactly. That's where I'm coming from with it. I think, I, I don't, I'm not knowledgeable enough on some of this stuff to ask the right question to lead the developer through it. I think they need the time to, 10 minutes is not that long a time.
And it's up to 10 minutes. Doesn't mean they got to sit up there and talk.
They got to go 10 minutes. I just, I just think, I don't think it's our position to lead them through it. I think you're giving them the time to speak, then we can ask questions. And when they get, when the, when the public gets there, five minutes up there, they can ask questions and go from there.
So what, would there be a situation hypothetically if the applicant had up to 10 minutes prior to the public hearing and then a host of citizens come and have only five minutes each, and then we close the public hearing, then do we lose the opportunity to ask the applicant additional questions?
No, but you also, the applicant could speak during the public hearing because you're right now as defined, you're not defining that differently. I do think you need to remember six years ago, prior to that, there was no time limit on public hearings. So there's confusion among people who have long been coming to council meetings that the procedure changed, but it's been six years changed, not a recent change.
Correct.
And the five minutes in my tenure as city manager, as far as we can find, has been adhered to by applicants and others. This is the first instance that I'm aware of, that any of you have made me aware of, and several people did, that there was a concern about this. So I do want to reiterate, these are your rules as a council and procedurally, you have the right to change them if that's what you want to do in the majority. That's just up to you and how you, how you view, but it would not change unless you define it differently and applicant's ability to speak also during the public hearing and for their representatives to speak because it's not defined otherwise.
Megan, this thought of having this conversation, this presentation before the public hearing is open. Is that, is that okay? Is that, if we want to do that as part of our rules, we can?
Yeah, that's up to the city council. There are times that applicants like to wait because they like to also then respond and be able to weave into their presentation. That's up to the applicant or their representative. You've kind of seen it all ways. Sometimes they'll stand up and say, hey, I'm here. I'm happy to answer questions. I don't have anything to add. It's really whatever their nuance is and it's however the council wants to see it procedurally. If you want that information so that it's out there before the public starts the portion of the public hearing where they then have their piece, that's, that's up to you all procedurally. It's really your choice.
I think, I think I recall this happening, that you'd have an applicant or developer that would speak and then they would have an engineer or another representative come up and speak and then they could have a partner come up. And so they've more or less taken 15 minutes with three different speakers on the same project. Kelly, would your intent be that 10 minutes is for that project, for the developer and their team to speak to the project? Would that be your?
My intent, yes.
Okay. All right. Counsel, this is, I'll just try to keep us moving along here. This is certainly a new idea. I think we all obviously knew all this was coming. I don't know if people here, everybody's ready to, to make a, a move towards either moving forward, asking the staff to put together something for us to consider, or we need more time to think about this, or we're not in favor of this, we like our rules as they are and, and, and not consider anymore. So if I could get some guidance as where everybody might be right now so we can keep moving. And I don't know, people may have some more questions they want to ask and some thoughts they want to share too. So there's something everybody's got.
And this may be something suitable for a, an offline meeting for us to discuss council procedures.
Okay.
Do that. I, you know, I already get all of us together again outside of council, but.
We could, so you're like a work session or something like that?
Like that perhaps, but.
Okay.
I just, folks may be satisfied with how it is.
Sure.
I just know I'm not.
Well, I spent a lot of time looking at y'all. I looked, trying to get some guidance as what direction we're going. And I don't, I don't see a firm direction that I believe is unanimous. And I just wonder if we should think about this for a while and, and maybe consider having a work session sometime in the near future and give us some time to consider it, maybe ask each other some questions, ask the staff, the city manager some questions, and then maybe if the idea is worth pursuing, have a work session and see where we go. If that's, if that's all right with everybody. I don't, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I'm just.
I prefer work sessions because I, I have a lot of questions because I'm, I'm not really understanding. So I prefer a work session.
Okay.
That's my preference.
I don't know that it requires a work session. If Megan was, could do it, I think the staff could put together some options that we could, she could send us, we could look at them and then we could all agree which one we like or stay like we are or go forward and move forward with it. Ain't much you can say about it. It's what we said tonight. So I, I think if Megan comes with some options that we could possibly change the policy to, that'd be great. But if not, we leave it like it is.
Well, I'm a little perplexed by asking the city manager and her staff to try to understand what we're expecting when the, the idea and the need for, the request for consideration came from a council member who took the time to ask Megan to put this into a draft form for us to consider. So I think what we're, we have in front of us is what we can consider. And maybe we just need another meeting or so to, to, to digest this a little bit further, understand if there's any unintended consequences by the request, or if this is a, a positive shift in our, our rules and procedures, or if we need to, you know, not change. So from my lens, I don't want to be disrespectful and say no off the bat. I would like to digest this a little bit further, seeing that this is the first time we've seen this. But I don't know that Megan can get into nine people's heads as to what we expect our rules and procedures to be unless we dictate out of our own lens what that looks like. So I mean, I would think it's fair if we digest this another meeting or so and then review it again.
Well, I hadn't suggested getting inside anybody's head or anything like that. What I'm suggesting is that we get some options to go by and I'd like to know how other cities do it or whatever else. How does, how does cities our size, our former government, how do they handle that type of thing? I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't suggest analyzing somebody's head on it.
Mayor, if I may, do you have, your intention was with the council salary discussion to have another work session about that prior to this being on the agenda?
We could, yeah, absolutely.
Well, meaning, you guys were marinating.
We're a long ways from coming to some conclusion.
You were marinating on that as well. So I am asking, I mean, we can put some information together per Councilman Dawson and some things we've heard tonight as a starting point. You guys could have that discussion. I will remind you that procedurally you have to move to put something actually on the agenda in a committee of the whole.
Right.
And so, because we do need to know what you want on the agenda to consider. So at some point you'll have to come back and assemble here before a council meeting to ask for whatever it is you ultimately, the majority would like to see on the agenda.
Okay.
But we're happy to put some things together. And if you want to combine that to have further discussion in a couple of weeks, we can do that.
Yeah. I appreciate you making that offer, Megan. I would recommend that we follow through on that. We can, Megan and staff can put some ideas and some thoughts together, can get that out to us. We need to get back together and, and continue to discuss the, the council compensation. And we could do both at the same time potentially. So why don't, if it's all right with y'all, we've had a good discussion on this. We've opened the idea up. I think we've all got enough we can think about and consider. And certainly we're free to ask one another thoughts and we can certainly send emails to the city manager about any questions we might have and we'll take this up later to work session. Is that okay with everybody?
Okay.
Okay. Is that all right? All right. Anything for the city manager related to the agenda tonight? Okay. Ms. Crouch, you, you handed something out to us.
Real quickly, you just have a substitute resolution for item 10C. We just needed to modify that. That's about an Alabama industrial access road grant through ALDOT. We need to switch the applicant. Just to clarify that the city will be the applicant and not the industrial development board. So it's, it's sitting on your place, a redlined version, just showing you what the change is.
Okay.
Something we caught today embedded with the city attorneys. And just to be clear, the mayor deems to sign a document beyond the resolution. So we need that changed. And that is all I have.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for the city manager? Okay. Is there a move to adjourn?
There's a move.
We will adjourn. And then I'll call it order tonight's Auburn City Council meeting for April the 1st, 2025. We welcome all of you who have joined us here in the council chambers tonight. We also welcome those that are listening on WANI as well as that are watching through our streaming services. Lindsay with the roll call.
Adams.
Here.
Coblenz.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Parsons. Taylor.
Here.
Witten.
Here.
Anders.
Here. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. This is the first meeting of the month. And so we will be proud to introduce you to our employee of the month as well as our other outstanding employees with their service awards.
We're proud to introduce you to our April employee of the month. And I have a memorandum here from Dan Ballard, our public works director for the city of Auburn. Patrick Slaughter began his career with public works department in February of 2024 as the operations and facilities division manager after serving more than 22 years with the engineering services department. Every day since his promotion, Patrick has demonstrated why he was the ideal candidate for such a strategic position. Patrick is a consummate civil servant, placing the interest of Auburn citizens as his highest priority for performing his job duties with passion, integrity, diligence, and care. But what distinguishes Patrick above all else is his equal care for and camaraderie with his colleagues. Patrick's friendly and outgoing personality, his vast institutional knowledge, and unwavering work ethic have proven to be the perfect combination for seamlessly collaborating with other departments and contractors to provide excellent maintenance and repair services for the city's infrastructure and facilities. This is exemplified in his accomplishments over the past 14 months, which include developing and implementing the facilities division budget, managing repair and maintenance programs for 24 city facilities, developing and implementing preventive maintenance service agreements, forming a strategy for roadway patching after utility repairs and expansions, developing and implementing a strategy for repairing and rehabilitating the city's storm sewer system, managing over 60 construction and maintenance projects, and continuing to assist the city's annual bridge inspection program. Patrick always leads by example and exhibits the city's core values. His contributions to the public works department and to the city of Auburn are commendable and deserve an appraise and recognition. It is for these reasons that I nominate Patrick Slaughter for the city's employee of the month. Congratulations and thank you, man.
Thank you, everything. Thank you. Congratulations to all of our outstanding. Congratulations to all of our outstanding employees. Congratulations to Patrick Slaughter for being recognized as our employee of the month and all the best to Felice Jones, John Langford, and Jeffrey Reeves as they go into retirement. And we appreciate every one of these employees that we recognize tonight for doing an outstanding job on our behalf. During the committee of the whole, the city council, uh, made a determination to put off the, um, nominations, um, and, and the appointments with the Historic Preservation Commission until two weeks from now to give those incumbents an opportunity to fill out their application. Also, the city council reappointed Ms. Bonnie McElane, uh, to a second full term with the Auburn Public Library. And then we just completed a discussion about council procedures, uh, related to public hearings and applicants' opportunities to present. And the council has made a decision to, uh, to have a work session in the near future, uh, to evaluate some ideas and some thoughts at that work session to keep this conversation moving forward as to which direction the council would like to move. As far as mayor's announcements tonight, I wanted to start off, uh, this past Saturday was Household Hazardous Waste Day. And I know our Environmental Services Director is here and I didn't know, city manager, if we could get a report on how things went last Saturday.
Absolutely.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
We had a wonderful, wonderful turnout. We had over 493 cars come through and we collected over 40 pounds of material and 2,000 pounds of material that needed to be shredded. So thank you all for your support on that day. Um, we, it was great weather and we had a great time, so thank you.
Good, thank you, Katrina. We appreciate the hard work of your staff and being there on a Saturday to take care of that. This coming Saturday, the Civic Corral, uh, led by Dr. Dale Peterson will be having their spring concert at three o'clock. This will be Dr. Peterson's final concert. He has led that group, uh, for a long, long time on behalf of our entire community. There are, uh, there are people that, from all walks of life and many different denominations and worship bodies that come together. I did go to their Christmas concert and it was excellent this year and I'm sorry I'm going to miss it this Saturday, uh, but Coach Pearl's asked me to be in San Antonio. I want to remind everyone that the Tiger Trail of Auburn is Saturday, April the 12th. This is an opportunity to celebrate four former athletes who will have their plaques installed in downtown Auburn. Steve Wallace, Coach Karen Hoppa, Jack Stewart, and Reese Dismukes. This is at nine o'clock at the Auburn University Athletic Department is open to the public. Please call the Chamber of Commerce if you are interested. I spoke about Chief John Langford, uh, a while ago and I just want to say again, thank you, uh, to our fire chief and for everything he did. Uh, he retired this last Friday. There was a wonderful reception in his honor, uh, right behind us over here in fireplace one. And, uh, John took care of us and saw to the needs and the protection of this community through his role as our fire chief and we certainly wish him well. And also, also say thank you, uh, to the council for supporting the new community market. Uh, the groundbreaking was held recently and, uh, that's going to be a fantastic facility that is going to support, um, over a thousand families a month. Uh, receive food and, uh, and are sustained through that body and through the efforts of the food bank and their retail operation. And we just appreciate it and excited about, um, their, their opening here, uh, in another year. And I do know we have some scouts with us tonight and we'd love to have our scouts stand and introduce themselves and please share what troop you're with and what you're studying here tonight. How are you doing?
Good.
Good.
Okay, so, uh, my name is Leo, Leo Kim. We are, uh, part of troop 11 and we are working on the communication merit badge. And what we're doing here today is just taking notes on some of the points mentioned, uh, and writing a report to, to present it to our troop.
Good, well, we're glad to have you, Leo. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um, my name's, wait.
You're good.
My name's, um, Yin Ho Ching and I'm also working on the communication merit badge, same as Leo. And, yeah, um, I'm here to kind of note on what you guys are saying and stuff.
Good, well, thank you. We're glad to have you.
My na- my name is Samuel Benjamin Wright of troop 11. I am, uh, for communication, I'm here for that, same as the other two.
Good, we're glad to have you. Thank you. Yes, sir. Gentlemen?
My name is Jerry Samuel, troop 11, and I'm also working on communication merit badge.
Okay. Okay, well, good. Well, we're glad to have you here tonight and certainly I will volunteer any of these people up here after the meeting's over with if you want to ask them a few questions. But we're proud to have you here this evening. Okay, any other announcements from our council?
Yes, I want to, I just want to thank, um, Mayor Anders, uh, for coming out on last, I think it was last Monday to the Borkin Community Center to talk about. And also I want to thank Kelly for, uh, showing up and being a part of that conversation about the boards and commissions. And it was a good conversation and very informative. And I also want to thank all the panel that was there that sits on these boards and, uh, giving, you know, their views and ideals about the boards and commissions. So thank you again, Runt, for coming out and thank you, Kelly, for coming out and being a part.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor, for organizing. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay. Did you have something, son?
Uh, no, it, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It just struck me that a little over 60 years ago, I was in troop 11. Good to see you.
What merit badge are you working on tonight? We're proud to have our scouts with us. All right, at this time, we'll have Auburn University Communications.
Hey, good evening and extra war eagle today. Auburn students are super excited about our basketball team advancing to the final four round of the NCAA March Madness Tournament. Students who scanned in at multiple games this season have the opportunity to buy student tickets at a discounted price for the final four and the possible championship game. Students who are not traveling to San Antonio this weekend are invited to the Neville Arena for a final four watch party. And then, um, speaking of athletics, Auburn's equestrian team is currently ranked number one in the National Collegiate Equestrian Association. We are super proud of these talented student athletes and their success this season. Um, last week, Auburn fraternity members came together to host the Fight Against Suicide, which was a boxing fundraiser to support young adult suicide prevention. While this was not an event affiliated with or sponsored by Auburn University, it was entirely student-led and raised an outstanding $150,000 for this important cause. This is a powerful example of Auburn students coming together to fight for something that they believe in. In SGA news, director and assistant director positions were announced at last week's callouts. I'm honored and excited to continue serving as the Director of City Relations for another year alongside my newly appointed, uh, appointed person, Ashley Burke. These appointments will go before the SGA Senate for approval in the coming weeks. And then looking ahead, S- SGA's lobby board will host Representative Jeremy Gray. Um, and we are super eager to welcome him and hear what he has to share with us. And then finally, this Saturday, the Outreach Global Office is hosting the Global Community Day Festival, a celebration that brings together international and domestic communities to explore diverse cultures, histories, and global opportunities. Everyone is encouraged to attend and take part of this experience. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Evan. We look forward to continuing to work with you.
Yes, I'm excited.
Mm-hmm. Just a comment about the, the boxing event that happened. I know the young man that was in charge of that and he put together a great team and, uh, to raise $150,000 for suicide prevention is outstanding. We're very proud of them and thankful and I heard it was an awesome event that night. And, uh, it reminds me of the old days of the A Club Boxing Tournaments if any of y'all are my age and lived in Auburn in the seventies and eighties. And, uh, um, they might be on to something, but a positive event to raise money for a positive cause that needed to have some attention brought to it. So congratulations to those students. All right, we'll move on to citizens' communications on agenda items. These are only communications to the council related to items on tonight's agenda. As we spoke earlier, there are a number of items that have public hearings attached. If that is what you'd like to speak to us about, we'd ask that you hold those comments until then. But if there's anything else in our agenda you'd like to speak to the council, please come forward and you'll have five minutes to speak. And we'd ask that you come, give us your name and address.
Uh, Robert Wilkins, 261 Denton Drive, Auburn, Alabama. Wanted to talk about, uh, eight C3 concerning, uh, purchase of vehicle. I know that it's already been approved, uh, in the past councils and, uh, for the new, um, uh, inspector. Uh, what, but what I want to talk about is, is the number of vehicles that we continue to purchase and don't understand why we continue to do that. We're very fortunate to have been and blessed with so much funds coming in from our revenue. But, uh, the mayor had said at, uh, end of the year when he did his, uh, address that we have 870 vehicles back then. And that they drove around 3 million miles. That comes out to 3,448 miles. That's all on those vehicles. I mean, some have less, obviously some have more because we have a great police department. We have a, uh, our trash pickup and so forth. They drive a lot of miles. So, you know, somewhere in between there, we have vehicles that have very few miles. And, uh, uh, I, I, I think when we decide to, uh, make purchases, we should get more information from the, uh, uh, city manager concerning about how many vehicles that we have in each department and in ascending order. It would be great to know the mileage of those, the date of those vehicles and, and have an idea if we're not over spending our money. Because we seem to be spending an awful lot of money. Now, this vehicle's one of the lowest we've had. It's like 38,000 and something dollars. But I've seen us have 100, 200, 300,000 or whatever. And, uh, I, I think it's excessive. Uh, we, we need to, we have issues in this city that need to be addressed. I mean, I, I went to, uh, out to the new Lake Wilmore, um, thing today and, uh, went to the recreational, uh, meeting and it was awesome. The facility out there is awesome. So we have the money to, to, uh, put some beautiful things out there. But we can't continue to do that if we continue just to spend an awful amount of money. So I think the council needs more information to make sure because you are the governing, uh, body of this, uh, uh, city. And, uh, our city manager and the, the people under her are the ones who gather that information and make sure that things are kept at a certain pace and do, do a good job. I, I don't deny the job. I just say that we're, we have more money than, uh, we realize. I, I was with a company once that, uh, we had so much money, uh, we paid all our bills in the first quarter. And, um, they included a, a huge loan and so forth. And I realized in a short period of time, it was easy for us to spend money. You know, we spent money for this. Uh, my phone bill was running around. This was, of course, been a while, but it was running about $1,800 a month. I told my partners, this is ridiculous. Oh, don't worry about it. We've got the money. And I really believe that the city, uh, does a little bit of that. It doesn't mean that they're doing a horrible job, but let's, let's, let's act like we don't have as much money, that we're not as blessed with so much revenue, that each year that revenue continues to increase and increase. And, uh, it is easy to, to make a budgets. It's easy to, uh, do things when every year your revenue increases and it's increases substantially. I mean, my, my, uh, contribution is more than double for my house. I mean, uh, my taxes have more than doubled and I've been here 10 years. So, uh, you know, I don't mind paying, uh, taxes. I just believe that we are not doing our job as a council, uh, me as a citizen and as our city manager and her many, uh, employees that work under her. I think that we, uh, should start figuring out issues that we can, uh, raise money for and do things. Like what, Lake Wilmore, it was beautiful, but it would be nice to take some more money from all these excessive purchases and, uh, do some other facilities that are smaller, uh, and, uh, so forth. But, uh, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor, if I, I'd like to respond to these.
Okay, please.
Mr. Wilkins, I appreciate you coming tonight and making, uh, being all your concerns about purchasing the vehicles. And I'm sure if you knew the, uh, what we go through to purchase these vehicles, you, you feel differently. Uh, I started with the Police Department in 1987 and we had to drive our own cars. I went to narcotics in 1990. While in narcotics, had to drive my personal vehicle to catch bad guys out of it. So did other people in my unit. We, only way we got a car back then was you got a seizure or bought it or, or yourself because we didn't have the cars go around. We've grown and we, I, I personally think our staff does a tremendous job, whether it be the environmental services, whether it be police, fire. But they got to have the twos to work with. And, and, and I can assure you, if I thought for one minute we were wasting money, I wouldn't waste a citizen's money because I, I have my own, I pay taxes myself. But I want you to know, I, I would be, I'd, I'd, I'd be the first one, uh, saying we got too many, but we don't have too many, I don't feel like. Because you, you gotta have a way for people to get around and do the job. And recruiting nowadays is tough to get, to attract the best people we can attract. And you can't expect them to come in here and walk or drive a piece of junk car that quits on you every time you try to get out in it. So, uh, I, I, I'd like to rest your mind at ease. We're, we're, we're staying on top of it. Councilman Griswold frequently brings it up and, uh, as he should. But, uh, I, I think on that, you're just dead wrong. We're not buying too many. We're probably not buying quite enough.
Megan, the, the, just, uh, when a department or staff want to purchase a vehicle, do they have to provide you with justification or, or do they just say, I want to buy a vehicle?
Absolutely. If you look at my department heads carefully when I make this statement, they get turned down far more than they get approved for a vehicle. As a matter of fact, a lot of requests don't get to me because I'm a stickler about vehicles. One of the challenges is in the mayor's state of the city speech, he said 870 vehicles and equipment, not just vehicles. And so, equipment is different. We don't have 870 vehicles. However, um, when people are able to share, they do share this, this vehicle. When we get to this item is for a new fire inspector position. I can certainly not purchase a vehicle if you don't want to vote for it in the majority. But then I will have an employee who is not efficient with their time because they will have to wait for another inspector to finish their inspections um, that our citizens and builders are expecting, um, to come into the office so they can turn around and then use that vehicle to go make their inspections. For liability reasons, we rarely have employees using their own vehicles. As a matter of fact, there was a vehicle accident today involving a city vehicle and I'm grateful that nobody was seriously hurt and the employee was just doing their job, um, picking up recycling. However, things happen. Um, but anytime the council wants to talk or have questions, we do this twice. We do this in the budget. This item is budgeted. Um, but that is your first level of seeing the vehicles we plan to purchase. And then your next level is tonight or any given night that we put them on the agenda. So, so you get that, but the vetting process is, is much. If I think people can share, the planning department has one vehicle for how many employees do you have?
Nine.
Nine. And so they share among nine employees. If they need a vehicle beyond that, the other departments in this complex, engineering, inspection services, and others, if they have one they can spare, they borrow one of theirs. And so we do, city hall, very few departments have vehicles. We're very careful, but when an employee that is in the field all day, every day, minus their reporting time, needs a vehicle, then, then they get a vehicle. So, but we'll be happy for the city council. Um, I can give you a breakdown of equipment versus vehicles, but we do not, um, in any way, shape, or form. Uh, the department heads will tell you, we're running our vehicles longer miles and more years on the vehicle. If the vehicle's not costing us a lot of money, we don't replace it. We drive the wheels off of it as we should and our taxpayers expect.
Megan, could you touch a little bit on how, what the city shop does to monitor these maintenance of these vehicles when they get to costing us more money than?
Well, the, the city shop weighs in on whether or not it needs to be replaced. And we were at one point in time on a seven-year, and Katrina will shake her head if I'm wrong, replacement cycle. When I became city manager, I removed that and our department heads had to get used to that. We were looking at how we manage our fleet. What we're looking for is we've had, engineering services had a truck that we'll call Lemon. We've replaced an engine more than once. We've done other things under warranty. Finally, we just had to give in and replace it because it was out of service nine out of 12 months out of a year and that doesn't help us. So it's a lot of vetting that we do. Things like police cars get tires on a regular basis. And as you well know, chief, police cars are pretty much driven 12 plus hours a day, every day, seven days a week. They're shared among, uh, among certain officers that are out on patrol and a few people have directly assigned. So there's a lot that goes on with our vehicles and maintenance, for sure.
And I wish we could have more particularly marked police cars because if you had, you had enough, you could give each officer his own car. We, on his off days, his car may be sitting at the house, but that, that, it's not as likely to get burglarized anywhere on that street where you got a police car sitting.
Yes, we've looked at that and the police chief has worked with me knowing the concerns about the amount of vehicles. And our lack of availability lately, supply chain has been challenging. And unfortunately, we lose a few police vehicles a year or two accidents, just things happen. And so what we've tried to do is build the fleet to the point that we can surely outfit everybody who's on patrol with a few to spare for breakdowns, maintenance, et cetera.
All right, anyone else like to, uh, speak on items on tonight's agenda? Okay, we'll move.
We'll move ahead with the city's interest. I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
This is the right time.
It's the time for you to speak. Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
No. Do you want to speak? Yeah, please. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Cody Warren. My husband and I reside at fourteen thirty-six McKinley. And as many of you know, McKinley, that part of McKinley is very short street, only three houses. But it intersects with Alice. And we are right down the road from the new high school. And what we're faced with is students just inundating our street, parking. And my, what I was told is they didn't have enough parking for the students. And so, they're having to park somewhere else. And of course, they park on McKinley. Now, we're at the very dead end. And because it's a dead end, there's no traffic. And we really don't mind the cars there as long as they don't block our driveway. But what's starting to happen is that the kids are coming and they are very near our driveway. But they're littering, they're coming down there, playing their music very loud. Because I think what happens is that they have friends who are parked at the school that bring them over and drop them off to pick up their cars or to take them over. And they're playing loud music, they're using profanity. One was kicking another one's truck tires. And we thought it was a fight getting ready to get started or whatever. So, they're being very disorderly. And because it intersects with Alice, there's a fire hydrant there. And I have pictures to show that they are parking or blocking the fire hydrant, which is of chief concern to us because should an emergency come up, the fire trucks would have a hard time reaching the fire hydrant. And I think what this initially started was one of our neighbors. Because they were parking where she backed out or they backed out of their driveway, it made it hard for them to maneuver. So, one of the parents did come and ask us politely if their son could park. And we were very appreciative and we told them yes. So, we did give one of the students permission. But after that, it was just like everybody decided to come. So, we were not necessarily wanting to restrict the students. But we're kind of at a standstill as to what decision to make. We did receive a notice that I think you all were deciding to put no parking from East University down to Alice. But as far as the dead end, you were not going to put signs of no parking. And you were going to do it from seven to nine. Our other point was, we have a yard service that comes. We're not sure what time they would come. So, that's going to impede them parking there. And should we have anybody else that's coming, then, you know, we're affected by that. So, we just wanted to kind of let our concerns be known and.
Thank you for coming. Have you talked to those parents since the music became loud and the trash started, ended up in the street?
Well, now, it was only one parent that came and asked if their son could park. And he, it's not the problem. He is very quiet. He comes, get in his car and he leaves. Very polite young man. It's some other kids that's coming. Of course, I don't know who those kids' parents are. But I did speak to some of them. And my neighbor who wasn't able to come tonight, she spoke to them and told them that was not going to happen. We were not going to have that. And they let them know we were going to come to a meeting and decide about them even parking over there. So, and I did tell one young man when we saw trash all in the street that, you know, we weren't going to have that. And he actually got a bag and got the trash up. He said, I didn't do it, but we saw who did it, but we're just get it up. So, that's some things that we're being faced with.
Thank you for coming tonight. We're sorry for your troubles.
Thank you for listening.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, I'd like to clarify too. She has spoken with the city engineer. And in this particular address, when we get to that item, your desire was to allow it in front of your house, correct?
We didn't mind as long as they weren't being disorderly and throwing trash.
So, for now, it is that way. Should the council adopt us when we get to this item? If she changes her mind, you can always modify accordingly.
So, I want to ask a question about that. So, we saying that we're going to be establishing, and I may need to wait till they come up to you that?
Yeah, why don't we wait? Yeah, why don't we wait for the agenda?
It's an ordinance, so we'll have to go through individually.
All right. Anyone else on items on tonight's agenda?
That's public hearing.
There's a public hearing with that. Yep. Okay. All right. City manager's communications.
Mayor, I have no city manager's communications. Our first item of business is a consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes. Eight C three.
Eight C four.
Eight C three, eight C four.
Eight D one, please.
And eight D one. Anything else?
Anyone else? Okay. Eight C three.
Item eight C three authorizes the purchase of one twenty-twenty-five Ford Explorer for the inspection services department from Stivers Ford Lincoln in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. City manager, tell us again, who is this truck for?
For a fire inspector position that we added in this fiscal year.
And what does a fire inspector do?
The fire inspector is going around to businesses and checking for life safety provisions. We do, John Hoare, where are you? There you are. How often do we inspect businesses?
On average, once a year.
Once a year. So, we're adding, so by volume of our growth and so on, we've had to add fire inspectors. We also supplement with firefighters and firefighting crews or fire crews that work at our stations doing this inspection work.
That includes university properties too. We do.
It does on some. And we do it on some things, mainly fraternity houses. And the research park. And then the fire department itself has to do pre-fire planning at campus buildings because of our contract. Will, is that accurate?
If this inspector did not have an automobile, how would they do their job?
They would have to share with somebody else who would also be an inspector that has another job to do. They don't usually go in tandem anywhere unless they're training or it's a massive building.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Yes, son.
I have one. Is this also part of the inspection process for new construction and remodel? Does that, is that part of the application process?
At times, yes, but not always. John?
For commercial projects that has sprinkler systems, fire alarms or radio systems, kitchen hoods, they're involved in that.
Yep.
John, I'm not sure if we already.
I have to get him to stand up in a minute. So, John, you're going to have to come to the microphone because people can't hear you.
Yeah. Would you repeat that answer, John?
Next time, we're going to have you sit up in the front. No, this front one up here.
Here, come up. No, we want you all the way to the front.
All the way. The department heads love it for you.
Would you repeat the answer, please, John?
They are involved in the construction of many buildings that have sprinkler system, fire alarm systems, kitchen hoods, anything that would be related to life safety of new buildings. It could be as simple as making sure that cooking equipment is hooked up correctly to turn off the gas if there was an issue. They do about, officially about fifteen hundred inspections a year, which take anywhere from thirty minutes to six hours each. Then there is every day, probably two or three that are unplanned things that come up. We had one this afternoon that came up around three-thirty. Fire inspector went over there to make sure everything, work with other city departments to make sure everything was okay.
Thank you, John.
So, well, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
So, you got how many inspectors and how many vehicles for the?
Well, his inspectors, he's got building inspectors, so we need to separate. We've got entire fire inspectors. You have how many?
We have one fire inspector currently.
And this will be the second fire inspector that is tied to him. There are fire department personnel that supplement because we don't have another full-time person.
We have two neighborhood inspectors who are in and out of the, around and about the city all day long. And we have six building inspectors.
So, the fire inspection right now, the one that you already got, he already got his own, he already got a vehicle.
Yes, ma'am.
So, if you hire another one, they'll have to share that one, right?
They would have to share one and be pretty inefficient.
So, you're just trying to keep them from having to share with the workload.
Yes, ma'am.
So, what I wouldn't do is recommend this vehicle to you if, A, if they could share a vehicle, but B, we'd be inefficient. There's no point in adding a second person if they can't be out in the field all the time in their own vehicle because they need to be in two different locations.
I understand.
Thank you.
Another question. Are the rest of, I know it's one fire inspector. How many vehicles do you have in total in inspection services?
One per inspector, but not for your plan review, for your plan review people, John.
We have nine.
Yep.
For nine different inspectors that we have.
And all nine are out all the time?
Most all the day. I mean, the fire inspectors in and out, like fire inspector is probably out in the field five to six hours out of the day. The building inspectors are out six to seven hours a day.
They do have paperwork that they have to do in the office.
They're in the office in the morning for about an hour to get paperwork done. And then sometimes, depending on the weather, if you drop by in three days of rain, we're in the office more. But generally, they're out in the field six, six and a half, seven hours a day.
And John, their average working hours start for your inspectors, what time in the morning?
Seven to four-thirty.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else have a question or comment? We have a motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One nay. Motion carries. All right. Eight C four.
Item eight C four authorizes a contract with W.W. Compton Contractor LLC for the Boykin Gymnasium insulation project in the amount of one-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand dollars.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Who asked to have this? Ms. Taylor?
Megan, I know this has been a long time coming. So, I just want you to explain to everybody exactly what we're doing here for the installation.
So, when the Boykin Gymnasium was built, it had insulation in the roof. That insulation has deteriorated. And now, we need to add insulation on sidewalls. It is the south and the west wall is.
South and east.
South and east wall. So, we installed an air conditioning system based on that consultant assumed that there was, the building was fully insulated and it was not. And so, the air conditioning system has not been running efficiently. It's not pulling humidity out of the room at a level that allows it to function efficiently. So, our only choice here is to add insulation so it will function as designed. Heat is obviously works better than the air conditioning because we don't have the same humidity issue. This will be funded out of block grant funds, one-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand. And it should correct the issue. Dan, remind me how many day contract this is when we're hoping to have this finished?
So, it's a sixty-day performance period in the contract. So, hopeful that the project's completed before summer season.
Before it gets way too hot.
Correct.
Have they ever started?
No, they can't. We need to sign contracts if you approve this tonight. And we need a little insurance and a few other things and we're good to go.
All right. Any other, any other questions, comments? Excited about having this done?
Yes.
All right. Have a motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. All right. Eight D one.
Item eight D one accepts various public easements and public rights away from Herring Development LLC for Rock House Farms subdivision.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Mr. Griswold?
Thank you. The final plat map that was provided in our package shows the entire roadway for Rock House and I guess it's the.
Bridlewood.
Bridlewood.
Bridlewood and then the new cul-de-sac. Yes.
So, it shows the entire roadway being color-coded as right-of-way with a little bit of drainage and utility easement along the edges. If we accept this easement right-of-way, does that mean the city has the responsibility to improve the road and culverts and whatnot? This was previously a private road. And we've gone through a lot of iterations on this already. But.
Yep. Development agreements previously dealing with who was paying for what with the road have been nullified and canceled. So, the developer is a hundred percent responsible. Acceptance of the road this evening doesn't obligate the city to make any improvements. It obligates the developer to make the improvements. The plat will not be signed until either they make all improvements contemplated here or they bond those improvements. And so, when you bond improvements, in essence, they're issuing a bond at a hundred and twenty-five percent of the value of the improvements to the city. So, should they not complete them and you've accepted right-of-way, the city can call the bond and step in and complete them. We do reduce the bond as they go through improvements over time, reduce the value. So, we are fully covered.
The bottom line, the city is not going to pay to improve these.
No, sir. We're paying nothing and the adjacent neighborhood is not paying for this. Either the development is paying for the entirety of it.
And now, with the changes to this development over time, the other road outside of Bridlewood is now a city, would become a city street.
It is a city street if it's highlighted as such.
It was going to be a private road.
Correct. There's a lot of changes. This is a private road. And the big deal is, is Bridlewood is a private road, the vast majority of it, until you get to a certain point. So, it's a big deal for the neighborhood behind it.
Thank you.
So, even the private road portions of that.
That goes away. This is a dedicated public right-of-way. What?
Be the developer's responsibility.
They have to make all the improvements or they have to bond them, which right now their plan is to bond them.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All right. Have a motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do you have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
The move.
Motion is second. Any further questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda is approved. Ordinances.
Under ordinances this evening, item nine A one establishes a no parking zone on Gatewood Place in the vicinity of the mailboxes at the request of the HOA. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Does anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with the vote on this this evening? Seeing and hearing none. Any comments or questions? Yes. Mr. Mormon?
I do. Thank you. One of the things that was mentioned tonight was that there is not adequate parking at Auburn High School.
This is about Gatewood Place, Councilman Mormon.
Oh, heavens. I'm a little off. My bad. I'll hold.
That'd be a little far away from Auburn High School.
We'll get there in just a second.
All right.
All right.
Okay.
No, you're good. All right. Any comments or questions regarding Gatewood Place? All right. Seeing and hearing none. Lindsay with the roll call?
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
O'Blunt?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
Right. Item nine A two establishes restricted parking zones on McKinley Avenue and Alice Street. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Does anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with the vote on this this evening? Seeing and hearing none. Mr. Mormon?
Thank you.
I'll let you go first.
Appreciate that. One of the things that was mentioned tonight is that there wasn't adequate parking at Auburn High School. That's a surprise to me. And I guess that creates little pockets around the city. But I just don't know if we can find out if that's true or not, if we're getting the overflow from the Auburn High School crowd or if there's some other reason that students are parking off campus. It would just be nice to know. I don't think that's going to drive our agenda tonight or any other night. But I'd like to thank the city staff for working through this rather difficult concern that citizens had and also the citizens who are in that area of Alice and McKinley. that citizens had and also the citizens who are in that area of Alice and McKinley. I thank them for their input and I thank everybody for their hard work on this and I think it is a good and reasonable solution and I intend to support it. And again, I thank those who were involved in working it out.
Appreciate your hard work, Sonny. You did a great job communicating with your citizens and your neighbors down there, so thank you for that. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Whitten?
Not speaking on behalf of the school system, but just my personal involvement with two children who either have gone through or currently at Auburn City Schools. They, the high school does have adequate parking. The 10th graders do not have the ability to get parking. That's a longstanding policy of the school system. And then additionally, there are drivers who don't sign a pact or an agreement through the school system for whatever reason and they are not allowed to receive a parking permit. So there's a couple of reasons why individuals may park or may not be able to park on campus directly and so, but there is adequate parking for who is available to park.
Would it be helpful to know the nature of this pact?
Oh, it's just, I mean, it's.
It's a conduct.
It's a conduct agreement that each student is asked to sign. They're not required to sign.
So in, in essence, a family is making a choice about that if, and that is a policy of the school system that doesn't involve the city, but that to park on campus, that it, that's a family choice as to whether or not they're going to agree to that for their children.
And there are a lot of sophomores who turn sixteen during the sophomore year who just don't have the opportunity to get a parking permit.
Do we have the space at the high school if we, if we could allow the sixteen year olds to get the, Ms. Whitten?
Well, I mean, I believe there's ample space, but that's a school policy and it's been a longstanding policy that sophomores of, of that class as a 10th grader are not permitted parking spaces.
Yeah, I, I'm not saying we haven't, but I was just wondering if we could have talked with somebody with the school system and see if we come up with a solution. We had, we had the same problem when the high school was old high school.
We did in Terrace Acres neighborhood. You're exactly right.
I thought we would, we'd have to revisit once we got the new high school, so.
Chief, they added an additional parking lot after that new school was built originally that's really closest to Sanford Avenue. I don't know how many spaces were there. I'm in and around that campus a decent amount and I've just had two children in the last few years that graduated from there. I, I don't know if there's any other place to put parking, to be honest with you. So.
There's also been the churches around it not speaking on their behalf, had been gracious at times to allow folks to park there until they had issues that a citizen just aptly described and so, and my, my impression is the surrounding businesses and or churches that were flexible, some have lost flexibility, there are some further away. We've also tried to discourage and not allow people to park at Duck Sanford. Students were running across the middle of Glen Avenue, forty-five mile an hour road, not a good plan. And so there have been, there have been a number of challenges. There's also a policy that per family, you get one unless that is changed. And so if you have a senior and a sophomore, you're not getting two parking passes, you're getting one. So some of this then comes to, they'll say that they have different schedules and then somebody will have a sophomore, a junior and a senior, and if they can afford three cars, they can only park one on campus. So it's a variety of reasons. This response from staff was a negotiation with the neighborhood and we tried to, the places that you see in red on here are where people had, had said that they did not want anyone parking in front of their house. And we only did seven thirty to nine thirty AM, again, as a compromise, correct, Brandy? And just to try to discourage it in the morning, we also find a lot of Auburn High School students have other schedules in the afternoon and you'll see more empty parking spaces on campus in the afternoon as seniors and other folks clear out and don't have a full schedule. So it's a, it's a fluid dynamic. This, we had also been having trouble with school buses. Councilman Mormon and the mayor have dealt with this a good bit. And there are buses for other schools that pick up on McKinley and Alice Street, taking children, school aged children to other schools. They have to be able to get through there, but we have worked with the schools handily to keep buses from cutting through there to enter the high school there, to enter from East University Drive. Correct? Okay.
Megan, I would presume that if we see a car parked in front of a fire hydrant, we would not find that to be positive.
No, but I can tell you, if you ever watch the movie Backdraft, if the car is in the way and we need access to the fire hydrant, we're going to get access.
We'll get there.
So, and, and, and you'll, we will protect you. We, we can also move the car with one of our fire trucks, pretty good at doing that if we have to. Not our desired outcome, but if there's a fire and it's a life safety issue, we're going to address it.
Good.
Megan, how would this be, if, if we move forward, how would this be enforced? Would it be ticketing, towing?
Ticketing, that's a good time, yes. Ticketing and police have been monitoring. Well, we've had a lot of police try to monitor our parking challenges in the vicinity of this high school on a pretty regular basis.
That's correct, since the complaints have been coming in. Mostly for these type issues, it is complaint driven.
So, but we may be out there early when the signs go up, if you approve this, to help that along.
So, my question is, I think he asked the question I want to ask. The restricted parking zone, so what, what would the restriction be?
Seven thirty AM to nine thirty AM, no parking.
Oh, okay. So that's the restriction.
Yeah, that was a negotiation with the neighborhood trying to, we've worked with them, so if you see red in your packets, they know that that is, they've agreed to restricted parking. If you don't see red in front of their houses, they didn't want it.
Oh, okay.
So we, we've tried everything, but again, you have a citizen who said, hey, I'm good for now, but doesn't mean we can't come back if there's an issue for somebody else and they want it changed either way. That's up to y'all. If you're willing to change it, we're always willing to bring it forward on behalf of our citizens.
And I would assume based off of the timeframe, that's when the majority of the students have been parking is during that timeframe, may I ask?
Yes. That's when they come and of course, most of the ones who are parking there, they're there all day until they get out of school at three thirty.
Yeah, all the cities.
Yeah, there is an opportunity for, like they have late arrival for a lot of students who don't have classes in the morning, that may be after nine thirty, so I just.
Brandy, you want to speak to why that timeframe was selected?
Yeah, so just to clarify, this is the same timeframe that we did use at Terrace Acres and Flowers and those other areas. Most students that park, as she mentioned, do park all day. So by eliminating their ability to park their proportion of the time, it eliminates them parking there all day. You do have, well, you might have a case where you have a late arrival that might get away with it, but those are going to be slim. We have found this timeframe to be very effective in the past.
Thank you.
And if it's not effective and you want to revisit it or the neighbors do, we certainly will.
And it, it does allow for still having your own guests, your lawn services and things like that outside of that timeframe.
That was, that was my question. How do we monitor guests first?
We can't. No, there, there is, so.
Neighbors just got to be careful.
Particularly wards five and six have dealt with on-street parking issues for a very long time and there was a movement several councils ago to deal with resident parking. We don't have a state law that allows us to differentiate public parking for residents like stickers, you've seen them in other states. Can't do that in Alabama. So the only way we could address this because we can't deal with resident parking and guest parking on a public right of way is we have to put a time restriction or, or not. So this is our best hybrid to try to help the residents address their concerns, but keep it a little flexible outside of these hours for repair trucks and so on. Otherwise, they need to be in your driveway. Yeah.
All right, anyone else? All right, Lindsay, roll call?
Whitten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Coblenz?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item nine B, consents to an Auburn Waterworks Board lease with Brassfield and Gory for a temporary construction material, laydown and parking area. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce ordinance and ask unanimous consent.
Second. Have a motion second. Does anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with the vote on this? Seeing and hearing none, any questions or comments? Okay, Lindsay, roll call?
Adams?
Yes.
Coblenz?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Whitten?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item nine B, consents to an Auburn Waterworks Board lease with Brassfield and Gory for a temporary construction material, laydown and parking area. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce ordinance and ask unanimous consent.
Second. Have a motion second. Does anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with the vote on this? Seeing and hearing none, any questions or comments? Okay, Lindsay, roll call?
Adams?
Yes.
Coblenz?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item nine B, consents to an Auburn Waterworks Board lease with Brassfield and Gory for a temporary construction material, laydown and parking area. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce ordinance and ask unanimous consent.
Second. Have a motion second. Does anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with the vote on this? Seeing and hearing none, any questions or comments? Okay, Lindsay, roll call?
Adams?
Yes.
Coblenz?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Whitten?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
All right, under resolutions, item ten A one is a request for conditional use approval of a road service use auto dealership with golf cart sales for property located at four five three Opalika Road. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its March twentieth meeting. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval. Second. Have a motion second. This time I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record and you'll have five minutes to speak to the council. Good evening.
Ghost of Stevens, seven thousand six Wald Road, Montgomery, Alabama.
Okay.
I think there was, at first I really want to thank the planning commission. I went back, I totally bollocks the, the dates in the midst of the planning meeting and they did a great job. They really talked it out and didn't dismiss it and I really appreciate that. I think there was a little confusion of what we're selling and what we're doing there. These are not jacked up gas powered ATVs or off-road buggies. They're very nice looking, all electric LSVs or golf carts, whatever you want to call them. We are looking, we really like this location because it is on a low speed avenue. People can come and, and rent from us or buy and drive downtown to view the university, to shop and, and they can safely do that without crossing any major roads, so.
All right, good.
Do you all have any questions?
Sure. Anybody have any questions?
So you'll, you'll be renting golf carts from this location for people to use to go downtown?
Uh, if they would like.
Okay.
I mean, it, they can, a lot of people just like to take it to their neighborhood, neighborhood for family members to ride around and try out before they purchase one.
And they're all street safe?
They will all be street legal, tagged through the DMV, everything's. These are not just standard golf carts we're throwing out on the road. They're all like a low speed vehicle, is what we call them.
What is, what speed do they go?
Uh, they're all capped. The industry, industry caps them at twenty-five miles per hour.
What is our speed limit on that portion of Opalika?
Twenty-five miles an hour.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe they have to go, I mean, at least twenty miles per hour.
Yeah, twenty-five is that we've got our low speed vehicle ordinance, Will can speak to that, but I mean, they are, they are allowed. We do see them frequently on Moore's Mill in the forty-five mile an hour section. They're not supposed to be doing that, but they do. A twenty-five mile an hour in, in the downtown area, that's one of the restrictions made and that was more for those, Mathenhold at one point in time was doing the little shuttles and that was, there were concerns, but these are street legal and meet a state law requirement.
These would not be allowed in other areas of town where the speed limit would be over twenty-five miles an hour.
And I'm sure their rental documents would probably address that because if, if he's at a maximum speed at twenty-five, then that's that.
All right, and then there are places that we fit more the industry, I think that the planning commission was asking, but those aren't safe for people to, that, you know, they would have to trailer them or something.
Somebody's not going to take one of these and drive down East University.
Right, yeah. These are, these are made for them.
You may see it, but they're not supposed to.
They're not supposed to. Is there anything that we can do if someone does that?
Will.
From an enforcement standpoint?
If they're operating a vehicle that's not a low speed vehicle, like a certified low speed vehicle?
If they're in one.
If they're, if they're operating a low speed vehicle like this gentleman is going to rent and on a.
On a higher speed roadway.
Higher speed roadway.
Yes, they can be cited under the ordinance. Right. Yeah. That'll be very clear.
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Kelly.
The, the aerial view of your site plan just shows a small portion for the outside golf cart display. And is that the only thing that's requiring conditional use?
No, it's the, it's the actual use itself, just because it's a road service use since it's auto centric.
Okay, all right. And so this little sort of a rectangle there in the front corner of this thing, the building behind it says you're going to be using half of that building. Is that going to be your sales office or your rental office?
Uh, storage, yes.
Where's your rental office going to be?
In the actual front building up near the road. It's a warehouse behind it.
Yeah, the, the storage building back, Kelly, you're talking about the front building, right?
I'm talking about the front building.
The one closest to Opalika Road.
Yeah.
That's your sales office, yeah.
That was Village Photographers, was it not?
Mr. Transistor?
Was it Mr. Transistor?
It was a repair shop for televisions.
Yeah.
This is next to Auburn Tire Service.
Yes, it is.
Next to Auburn Tire. Now, the back building is strictly for storage?
Yes, sir. We would only have maybe six carts up front in that corner. It, they don't, it's not a car lot. I mean, it takes up a very small footprint.
Because this is corridor redevelopment urban.
Okay.
This is why.
Thank you. Item ten A three is a request for conditional use approval of an outdoor recreational use slash subdivision amenity with a, its clubhouse with office space, pool, and other recreation activities for the Tiger Crossing subdivision on property located south of Kent Drive, approximately four hundred and fifty feet west of East University Drive. Planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its March twentieth meeting, a public hearing is required, and Mayor, if I may, before you open the public hearing, ask the planning director, based on some questions I've received, to explain that the subdivision is not before the city council for approval, that has been approved by the planning commission, and Mr. Whyheed Cotton will go over the why, so you're just looking at a subdivision amenity, not the subdivision itself.
Yeah, thank you, so, what was for y'all tonight is the amenity for the subdivision, it's added to the subdivision, not, not a part of it. The amenity normally would be a byright use within CDD, but because of the square-footage threshold, it has been kicked up to a conditional use, and so the threshold to make it byright is up to five hundred square feet, this is larger than five hundred square feet, uh, just with the range of amenities that they're providing, so that's why it is a conditional use permit, and it's within, and it has different standards that it has to adhere to, like being on a public road, et cetera, um, so that's why it's a part of this development, and this was something that normally when we have these situations, and it's a part of a larger subdivision, they do it afterwards, and so one of the things that people can do is that if it's within it, they'll wait, they'll get the preliminary plat done, they'll go final plat, and then once the amenity is within it, then all their APOs just go to themselves, since they're all the property owners around it, that was not something that the applicant wanted to do, that's something that they wanted to do, um, they wanted the preliminary plat and the conditional use to be coupled together, and so then it's still a part of the larger subdivision, and then the neighbors are notified, but normally, like I said, it's done differently, it was something that they chose to do, um, this route.
And I just wanted to clarify, 'cause I think some citizens are under the impression that this body has some sort of authority over the subdivision itself, and you do not, only the amenity piece.
Okay, I have a motion. Oh, yeah, we don't have, we don't have a motion yet. Have we?
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion in a second?
I don't have one.
No.
No, that's right, do we have a motion?
Kelly made the motion.
Okay, any motion, okay, alright, have a motion in a second, this time I'll open the public hearing, if you'd like to address city council on this, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, you have five minutes. Close the public hearing, any further questions or comments from the council? Yes, Kelly.
Yes, uh, you said it exceeds five hundred square feet by how much?
Six thousand.
Yeah, it's like six thousand, sixty-five hundred square feet, it's quite large.
Okay, uh, is this something that goes before the board of zoning adjustment?
No, 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 this is just, the amenity is having to go, it wouldn't be a conditional use if the clubhouse were five hundred square feet, but it's more than that, the totality of the, the improvements is bigger, so it just kicks it to a conditional use and has to come to you.
Okay, the building, it's the clubhouse itself, is gonna be six thousand something square feet?
Yeah, and so that, that's something that the applicant can speak to, but yeah, so they have like a pool, they have different things within, and they also run at least an office outside of it, so normally when you see these amenities, there might just be like a bathroom, there might be bathrooms, a shower area that may be attached to those, and that's very small, that, that falls under that threshold of five hundred square feet, but this is kind of a more of an all-encompassing clubhouse kind of deal, not necessarily just a poolhouse with like bathrooms and things.
Could we, could we have the applicant come up and give a, give a brief description of, of what they envision with this?
That's up to the council, yeah, that's, that's you.
Council care of that?
Yes.
Sure, is applicant here?
They are.
Thank you, if you cherish your name.
Yes, absolutely, good evening, my name is Brad Dinnerstein, I'm the applicant and the developer.
Your address, sir.
Thank you.
Your address.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, um, well, my local.
That's fine, however y'all wanna work this, good.
Yeah, Brett Asquon with the Forside Group, uh, twenty-three sixty-one Overtree Village Lane.
Thank you.
So, uh, in regards to, you wanna know what's all in the clubhouse?
I wanna know what's, what's in the six thousand something square feet?
So, I was just gonna say, the vast majority is a fitness center, and, uh, accompanying the fitness center is a yoga space, so that's really the vast majority of the space, uh, per code, given that it is a rather large space, there's men's and women's restrooms, and then in addition to the fitness component, we've got, uh, there's a massage room area, there's a space allocated for a cold plunge, an infrared sauna, and then there's a clubroom, um, there's some collaborative workspace, and then there's the leasing space, uh, the rest of it is just circulation to meet code requirements, but the vast majority are those amenities, such as fitness and the collaborative workspace.
Good, any other questions for the...
Doesn't include the pool and the hot tub, all those things are outside of this?
That's all.
Just, just the clubhouse.
Just clubhouse, yes, sir.
Okay, thank y'all.
But, but to clarify that, there will be a pool, and, and there will be...
I mean, there's, there's a pool, there's a pickleball court, there's, there's a bunch of different amenities, um, uh, there actually is gonna be a trail, the city requested a trail connection to Deneas Park there, um, and, uh, and also requested that we extend the sidewalk down Kent to tie into, yeah, East University to get you over to, um, uh, Doug Sanford, so there, there's, there's a lot going on with this development, both internal as well as external improvements the city's asking us to do.
Um, will this be limited to those people who are in the new development?
For the clubhouse, it'll be, the clubhouse, yes, and amenity, the clubhouse and the pool and those things will be, uh, yes, to the, uh, residents of the neighborhood, uh, in regards to the trails and those, the, the city has requested, uh, that, uh, that there be a public access way, so you, so they would be able to walk through the sidewalks and get through the streets, um...
There was some discussion at the planning commission that, um, those who live on Hickory Lane, it would be able, would, would or would not be able to use it, do you know?
No, yeah, no, they wouldn't, I, I mean...
It's not open to the public.
Yes, not open to the public, no, sir.
Just like any HOA's facilities typically are, not open to the public.
Thank you. Alright, any other comments or questions?
I know we're not here to approve or disapprove of the subdivision, but how many units are we talking about?
Hundred thirty-two.
Okay. Alright, got a motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the motion carries.
Item ten A four is a request for conditional use approval of a performance residential component, uh, that will include two additional units to be located in a mixed-use development known as the Vintage Expansion, located at two two four zero East University Drive. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its March twentieth meeting, a public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second.
Alright, got a motion in a second, this time I'll open the public hearing, if you'd like to address city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, you'll have five minutes. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, any comments or questions from the council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the motion carries.
Item ten B is since to the vacation of a public drainage and utility easement located at nine hundred Annabrook Drive, also described as Lot One A of Sugar Creek Estates, first edition, first revision, and further authorizes the mayor and city manager to execute a quit claim deed, relinquishing the property to Lot Revival LLC, a public hearing is required.
Move for approval. Second. Motion second, this time I'll open the public hearing, if you'd like to address city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, you'll have five minutes. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, any comments or questions from the council?
Yes, sir, what, what, what's driving the vacation of this specific easement?
They're relocating their drainage.
Okay.
For the, on the site, so they no longer need that easement.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, have a motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the motion carries.
Item ten C authorizes a submittal of a grant application to the Alabama Industrial Access Road and Bridge Program, uh, managed by ALDOT for a new public street off of Webster Road to provide access to a major industrial investment. The grant request is for three point four million dollars, and if awarded, would fund the construction of the road without any fiscal impact to the city's general fund.
Move for approval.
Got a motion in a second, any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the motion carries.
Item ten D one authorizes a modification to Task Order SWR zero five dash twenty twenty-four with barge design solutions for the Northwest Lift Station and Force Main Project, bringing the total contract amount to four hundred and eighty-nine thousand and thirty dollars.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any comments, questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the motion carries.
Item ten D two authorizes a contract with James Paving Company LLC for the FY twenty-five roadway patch project in the amount of two hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
May for approval.
Second. Have a motion second, comments, questions? Yes, sir, Kelly.
Yes, sir, I'd like to ask the city manager, how are these specific road segments identified or determined?
Mr. Ballard.
Yeah, so we keep a inventory of roadway cuts that are performed in the normal course of operation with water and sewers, they make repairs to their infrastructure, uh, we evaluate those based off of age, so we look at the age of the temporary patch that was placed over it, we look at the condition of the patch, and then we also review those roadway cuts with Water Resource Management and our engineering services staff, uh, to ensure that we're not providing a permanent patch in a location that's only going to be resurfaced within the next three to five years.
Or for that matter dug up in three months if we can help.
Correct.
So, that, okay, good, I didn't know if this was, I didn't realize that this was a, uh, replacement of pre-existing temporary patches.
It i, it is, yes, sir.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Absolutely.
Alright, good question, any other questions? Alright, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the motion carries.
Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
Okay, this time we'll open citizens' open forum, your opportunity to speak to the council about anything that might be on your mind, we ask that you come forward and share your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak to the city council, and we please ask that you address your comments to the city council. Yes, sir?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for the opportunity to, to address, say hello, happy, happy April, happy April. Uh, boy, what an exciting time here in Auburn, Auburn University and, and, uh, in the community and all, the, the, the final four, it's, I believe it's gonna be in San Antonio, am I correct? One of the four unique cities, I've had the opportunity to speak in San Antonio, oh, a few times, and it's a really, really a neat place to, to visit. Whoever goes there, wanna make sure you go to the, um, El Mercado, it's called the, the market, which is, which is just off the, uh, the Riverwalk down there, but it's a really, really a neat city to spend some time in, and I hope that the team and, you know, the fans and so forth can travel there safely and have a good, a good time with that. I didn't know, uh, John Langford was gonna be retiring, I'd, I'd reached out to him, said something to him, I, I was thinking back, the, uh, the, the, the Auburn Fire Chiefs that I've gotten to know over the years, Ronnie Blankenship, uh, Larry Langley, I believe, Lee Lamar, of course, and then, and then John, so what a, what a, what a Hall of Fame group of, of fire chiefs that you've had here in, in, with the, with the city of Auburn, and likewise, there's the, there's the corollary of the, of the Hall of Fame, police chiefs too, all, all these years, um, I just really wanted to just, oh, I did wanna ask, what is the project, what is the construction project, I've been watching it at the south end of Duck Sanford Stadium, what is, is that, my hunch is that, I could, I could look it up somehow, imagine, but my hunch is it's some sort of concession and or, uh, restroom expansion facility for, for both sides of the stadium?
It's a school project, correct?
It's the Auburn City Schools project.
Yeah.
It's stadium enhancements that they're making and entrance gate changes.
They just, but is, is it for, just, uh, make the stadium more...
I understand there's some infrastructure, some water.
But, yeah, I mean, it...
And I believe there's a new visitors entrance being built as well.
Well, it, it was first opened up in the middle of nineteen sixty-eight, that's, that's when there was the first football games for Auburn High School were played there in nineteen sixty-eight, so it's, there's, it's, there's something going on there that, uh, that's caught the eye of the school district, that, that's really neat, but anyway, I just wanted to tell you one more time, really appreciate what you do and, and, and how you do it, and, and, uh, let's, let's have a great spring, it's a beautiful time of year down here, I've called it Fantasia, but, uh, when the, uh, the daffodils and donkles start to come out in January and February, now the azaleas are coming in, and the doggos are coming right after that too, so it's really, really neat, but I really want to thank each, each and every one of you, Megan, you're doing a great job with management, Allison, you're doing a great job with Auburn Parks and Rec, and Ronnie, you're doing a great job as, as mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I appreciate you all a lot.
Yeah.
Tell your sweet mother to set a load, every time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Who'll be next?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Martha Shant, three oh seven Camellia Drive, greetings and happy Easter to all of you, that's April twentieth, the resurrection of the Lord. There's some good news, the Auburn Public Library now has a fresh start, thank God, the former library director is gone, under his watch, hundreds of sexually inappropriate books promoting homosexual perversions, anti-traditional family themes, and all forms of godless immorality were placed on shelves, even in the children's wing, but now, may the new library director steer the ship off the rocks of destruction. Meanwhile, a horrible table was set up at the Auburn High School promoting transgender ideology, this was very recently, this so-called club passed, passed out the rainbow-type ribbons with, uh, trans colors and promoted reprehensible practices. Please, if you are a parent of a student at Auburn High, I urge you to call the principal and denounce this beastly activity, you can also call the superintendent of Auburn City Schools and complain, stand up for the teachings of Jesus Christ, stand up for your Christian values, be a light, as Christ is the light of the world, His word never fails, protect the youth of this generation, make a call, thank you.
Who'll be next?
Good evening, my name is Jeff Walker, and I live at twenty seventy-eight Autumn Ridge Way, and this evening I'm proudly displaying the ribbons that were handed out at the high school, I'm the proud father of a senior at Auburn High School who is a member of the club in question, and I wanna talk about the courage these students have had over the past three years that my daughter has been at Auburn High School, they have worked with the administration and the teachers, the superintendent, and the school board to earn their right, like every other club at Auburn High School, and had the opportunity to get together and just enjoy each other, right? These kids are young, and you have to, excuse me, my blood pressure is a little high right this second, but these kids are young, and I have seen courage amongst these youth that I've not seen, I don't remember being this way when I was a teenager. The, the articles that were written about what happened at this high school and the assumptions that were made in the articles make it seem like no other club ever gets promoted at Auburn High School on that website, and I'll tell you, that's constant, right? Every club has the opportunity to promote themselves, and the teachers and staff at the high school wanna make everyone aware, so that there is an inclusive, not exclusive type environment there for everyone. I, I've seen firsthand the things that my own child has been called, either at this podium or in the media, uh, not just in the state, but nationwide, and I'm gonna tell you, as a father, it has been very difficult in the past three years, my daughter's gonna graduate this year, she's gonna graduate with honors, she's been an A student, and she has worked her butt off to be an, an example citizen and student at Auburn High School in the face of bigotry and hatred, and I'm gonna tell you, I have been appreciative of several of you on this council who have supported her in her plight and have supported these students, I've been appreciative. We live seven miles from one of what I consider the best colleges in this nation, and my daughter's not welcome here, so she's made a decision now to go to another college in another state, another college in another state, she has been an incredible member of this community, looking out for others and doing everything you want a young person to do, and to listen to people, stand up here, 'cause what they're saying is that it's my daughter, that's the problem, and those like her, and as a father, no one should have to listen to that, thank you.
Who'll be next?
Gabriel Dunham, two ten East Thatch Avenue, I'm here today to explain to you the importance of the event students were involved in yesterday at Auburn High. The International Trans Day of Visibility is an annual event, annual day recognized, celebrated all around the world on March thirty-first, which is dedicated to celebrating the accomplishments and victories of transgender and gender expansive people while simultaneously raising awareness of the work that is still needed to combat discrimination and violence. Trans youth already face higher rates of bullying, depression, and suicide, and the lack of acknowledgement or outright erasure significantly increases those risks. Trans Day of Visibility is a much-needed day of empowerment, celebrating the lives and achievements of transgender and gender expansive loved ones. We need to always hold space for our trans community members and recognize their many accomplishments. Trans Day of Visibility is only one day out of three hundred and sixty-five that gives allies a chance to uplift and support our trans loved ones. Yesterday, people like Auburn celebrated with other organizations and community members for Trans Day of Visibility at Tumors Corner. We had a great turnout and experienced many positive responses and support from our Auburn community. Representation matters, trans people will always exist, and they will always be a part of our Auburn community, thank you.
Who'll be next?
Hey, my name is Sarah Collins, eight seventy-five Cohaba Drive, um, I find it astonishing that someone would get up here and reference the resurrection of Jesus, and in the next breath, make statements that go directly against His teachings of kindness, reaching out to the excluded, and caring for people in our community. Um, I wanna thank the folks at the library for making sure that we serve every member of the community, not just a religious few, so thank you for the folks at the library who are doing that, um, no member of our community should feel like they don't belong. Um, our public services should be for the public, not for some people, for all people in our community, regardless of their faith, of where they come from, or where they wanna go, um, so I just wanted to express my support, um, for the students at Auburn High School who put on this event, and for our library who continues to provide excellent service and making sure that everybody sees themselves represented in the books that are included in that collection, thank you.
Thank you. Who'll be next?
Deborah Beal, eight oh two Tallahoma Drive, and sorry to have to be up here again, take up your time, um, and in case Ms. Taylor would like to talk to me afterwards about post knee replacement, but, uh, I want you to think, if your child was trans and had told you that they identified as a different gender, and your child was at Auburn Public Schools and was having these things said about them, this is, that would not sit well with you. I was at the Tumors Corner last night, I'm an ally, I'm a parent, my family member is an adult, but is trans, and they did not come out until their thirties because of statements like this, and they were worried that they would not be accepted, and that is a miserable life to live, so please, as you consider what your own personal beliefs are, those are your beliefs, but don't stop other people from living their own lives, living their best life, thank you.
Who'll be next?
I'm Robert Wilkins, two sixty-one Dentson Drive. Councilwoman Taylor, I really enjoyed the Ward one meeting. It was awesome. AJ I saw earlier today at the recreational meeting. Also, Mayor Andrews, you did an excellent job. I'm sorry that the turnout wasn't as large as you asked for one time, but it was really funny at that meeting when, when the, the most important committee was the cemetery committee. They were funny. They were, it was, it was a joyous time. I can't believe I laughed as much as I did. Also, the lady that continuously shouts and screams at Tumors Corner, is there anything? I mean, she's been there for weeks, months, maybe over a year. Is there anything that the council or the police department can do with that lady? She's just, it's, it's devastating, you know? It's so bad for the city. I realize we all have rights to speak, but it seems to be screaming and hollering and not even understanding and seeing her sign that has all kind of words on it. I didn't know what she's talking about, but I, I hear it every day because I pick up food for Uber, so I didn't know if y'all had any choice or not. I wanted to speak on part two, our underpaid council. What does a six hundred dollar part-time Auburn City Council member do each month? First, you attend two meetings a month for one to three hours with a hundred and fifty to four hundred pages to review for the meeting. Two meetings on Thursday before the Tuesday council meeting to go over the agenda. You have to research or prepare for those meetings. You receive cell phone calls, text messages, emails, personal meetings from your constituents, not just in your ward but other wards concerning the issues of the month, also deal on social platforms like Facebook and Nextdoor. You even attend special opening functions and happenings in each month. I believe that the growth of this city and expanded needs because of that growth that our council members should be full-time and compensated accordingly. When fifty-nine bureaucrats can get between a hundred thousand to two hundred fifty thousand per year. That's why I think we should have eight full-time members, whether it's thirty-six, forty-eight, sixty, or seventy-two per year income. This would allow competition for council members by enabled talented and creative citizens to afford being on the council. I do not believe that money is the single answer, but we as Auburn citizens should search out the leadership in our community and show them the vision of their potential leadership as a council member or even mayor. A close friend of mine said that the city manager makes two hundred fifty thousand while the vice president of the United States makes two thirty-five. Think about it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Miranda Bachelor. I reside at eighty Piccon Circle. The outrage expressed tonight discourages me. Student organizations like Educate are meant to encourage community, dialogue, and kindness between students at Auburn High School. As part of this effort, the club celebrated Trans Visibility Day, a national holiday, by allowing students the option to voluntarily come to their club's table during lunch and, again, voluntarily pick up and wear an unobtrusive ribbon like I have on today. The right for students to wear insignia like this is made very clear in the nineteen sixty-nine landmark Supreme Court case, Tinker v. Des Moines Independent Community School District. In this case, the Supreme Court ruled seven to two in favor of the students' First Amendment rights in public schools for students to wear black armbands in silent protest of the Vietnam War. An online article written about the Educate ribbons said that students' parents and grandparents were angered that the school was encouraging something so inherently political. Now, whether you consider this action political, like the protest of the Vietnam War, or whether, like me, you consider it to be a show of love and community, is that it's, it is at its core a First Amendment right for these students, and the freedom of speech is a pillar of our government without which it would fall. It is not something we can nor should we infringe upon. I ask this council and this city to show love and compassion. As Mark twelve thirty-one says, "And the second is this: You shall love your neighbor as yourself; there is no other commandment greater than these." Thank you.
Hello, my name's Cordelia Capitofaro and I live at one thirty-nine Solomier Lane. In reference to the article about trans youth that was published by the eighteen-nineteen specifically, this particular news site has been known to post unverified information and generally lack integrity. While it did mention people complained, I think we have all seen a person who only leaves negative Google reviews before. Just because some people complained doesn't mean that that is representative of the views of all students or parents. Further, the Educate Club is aimed at reducing stigma, which is exactly what we're facing with this article, and I believe all students have the right to feel safe in their identity. If the posting had mentioned something such as picking up a religious sticker at the table, we would not have had these comments tonight. As I've heard mentioned by a parent of a student at Auburn High School, previous inflammatory statements from the eighteen-nineteen are directly connected to the mayor of Smith Station, a husband and father deciding to take his own life. I do not believe this is the kind of news source we should be allowing to influence public opinion based on its track record. Thank you.
Who'll be next? Okay, we'll close citizens' communications, open forum. You want the council to have anything they'd like to say?
I would like to make a comment.
Sure.
If I can get it out. Rarely do I get emotional on this dais, but I am a parent and I am an ally and I'm appalled by what has been stated by an outlet that is considering themselves to be journalistic. Misinformation creates fear and incites hate, and I just would like to state that I'm proud of the people who spoke tonight. This is just ridiculous and that we should not have these kind of conversations in a community like Auburn. And I apologize for my emotions, but I don't apologize for stating that I support all those who want to be who they want to be, and we as a community should support anyone for who they want to be, who they decide to be, and be kind and not spread hate. That's all.
Anyone else?
I think that the Boy Scouts should get their merit badge. They really hung in there with us and it was good to see you all tonight.
Anyone else? Say remove to adjourn?
Salute.
All right, we adjourn.